Yeah, I wasn't thinking we'd have one people tonight. I call this regular meeting to order. I would ask Madam Clerk to call the roll.
You're muted, so there you go.
There we go. Thank you. Vice Chair Wang?
I'm here, present.
Commissioner Takahashi?
Here.
Commissioner Saxino?
Here.
And Chair Moore?
Present.
Commissioner Feng is absent this evening.
Right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. This meeting is being conducted pursuant to the provisions of the Brown Act and a recent executive order issued by the Governor to facilitate teleconferencing to reduce the risk of COVID-19 transmission at public meetings. Ordinarily, the Brown Act sets strict rules for teleconferencing. The Governor's executive order has suspended those rules. The executive order does require that we continue to notice meetings in advance. The city has met all of the applicable noticing requirements. Members of the public may offer public comment by email to planning@cuppertino.org prior to the close of the public comment period for each agenda item. Staff will share all such comments with the commission and make them part of the record. And our first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. Item one, subject the amended draft minutes of June 23rd, 2020. Recommended action, approve or modify the amended draft minutes of June 23rd, 2020. So are there any changes, any alterations to the June 23rd, 2020 minutes? Commissioner, Vice Chair Wong?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
I second. Madam Clerk, will you call the vote?
Yes, thank you. Excuse me, Vice Chair Wang?
Yes, I.
Commissioner Takahashi?
Hang on. Yes. Hang on. I'm muted.
No, we can hear you.
Oh, you can? Okay, all right. Hi.
Commissioner Saxino?
Yes.
And Chair Moore?
There we go.
I.
Thank you. The motion carries for one with Commissioner Feng absent.
Right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now we move on to item two, subject to the draft minutes of July 14th, 2020. Recommended action, approve or modify the draft minutes of July 14th, 2020. Are there any modifications to these minutes?
No modifications.
Do we have a motion? Commissioner Saxino, you're muted?
Motion to approve the minutes.
I second. Madam Clerk, will you call the vote?
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair Wang.
I.
Commissioner Takahashi?
I.
Commissioner Saxino?
Yes.
And Chair Moore?
I.
Thank you. The motion carries for one with Feng absent.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do we have any postponements? I'm seeing none. So then we move on to oral communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the commission on any matter within the jurisdiction of the commission and not on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. In most cases, state law will prohibit the commission from making any decision with respect to a matter not on the agenda. And I'm seeing five attendees. I see one hand raised. Jennifer Griffin? Jennifer?
I hope you all can hear me.
Yes, we can.
Okay. Welcome, everyone. Chair Moore, Vice Chair, and staff. I'm Jennifer Griffin, and I just wanted to remind everyone with all the other issues going on in California that we have an extremely short legislative session in Sacramento this year, and we have a lot of housing bills that are winding their way through the often interesting and eventful assembly, sorry, legislative session. And there are nine bills which are particularly very, very difficult. They would be very, very hard on the suburban areas. These include SB 902, which is Scott Wiener's equivalent to SB 50. There are several other bills, and they appear to all have been packaged. There were six now. It seems like there are nine, and we need to try to study those as much as possible because they are going to have, if they are signed by the Governor, they are going to have long-term issues with everyone in the state. I personally find all of the housing bills extremely problematic, and I urge everyone to try to study them. And anyone that you find that you cannot live with, contact the Governor's Office, the Senators, your legislators, and tell them what you think. The housing bills were already living with the repercussions of SB 35, and I think that these other bills will just have horrendous fallout for the rest of the state. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jennifer. I am not seeing any further hands raised. Okay, I see Mooney, Madipatla. Welcome, Mooney.
Hello. Could you hear me?
Yes, I'm starting your timer. Welcome.
Yeah. Good evening, Chair, Kitty Moore, and the rest of the Commissioners. Pardon my noise. You know, I'm biking on foot, so there might be some noise in the background. So I just wanted to bring this to Planning Commissions and Planning Departments' attention. There's a bike lane, separated bike lane that's getting installed on McClellan between Stelling and up to D'Anza. So there are quite a few residents. I live on that street. I'm fully supportive of the bike lane project, but I'm concerned that, you know, with the narrowing of the street with the bike, separated bike lane, I'm going to have difficulty in backing into the street because McClellan is a busy street. So I'm working with the Planning Department as well as Public Works Department to get approval for a horseshoe driveway for my home, so that way, you know, I can easily get in, get out without having to back into the street. So I'm hoping that I'll get approval pretty soon. I'm working very diligently with, you know, the city office on that. But I'm concerned, you know, my fellow residents, you know, may be oblivious to this. I'm just concerned that, you know, they are going to have these difficulties once the bike lane is put on. So I'm not sure, you know, what can be done, but I would prefer that, you know, they be advised if they want to do something, this is the time to do it. Otherwise, you know, if they come back later on, then we may have to rip off, you know, all the bike lane things that we are doing to facilitate their horseshoe driveways. Just a request, that's all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mooney. And do we have any further members of the public who wish to speak? You need to raise your hand if you do. Okay, I'm not seeing any further before public comment. Do we have any written communications? Madam Clerk?
No, nothing's come into the mailbox yet this evening.
Okay. And on consent calendar, we have nothing on consent calendar, and we move on to public hearings. We have nothing for old business. And for new business, we have item three, the subject, the Planning Commission Fiscal Year 2020, 2021 Work Program Recommended Action, Conduct the Hearing, and recommend that the City Council consider the Planning Commission Fiscal Year 2020, 2021 Work Program. Do we have a staff report?
Yes. Thank you, Chair, Planning Commissioners. We have a staff report attached to the agenda. This item is to bring back to you the list of city-approved, City Council-approved C-1 program for this upcoming fiscal year that technically started on July 1st of this month. And within it, we have nine items that fall within the Planning Division's review. And we have two additional items that are carryovers from the fiscal year 1920 due to the pandemic. As you can understand, we're, it's been challenging to try to get to all these things finished in time by June 30th. However, you will be seeing these come back this fiscal year. Just very quickly go down on the list of these items, just so the public has the benefit of hearing them. But like I said, the staff report is posted online. We have development accountability. We have update general plan and municipal code. Number three, general plan authorization process. Number four, the sign ordinance update. Number five, residential and mixed-use residential design standards. Number six, study session for impact and requirement for next reno cycle. Number seven, establish pre-approved ADU plans. Number eight, consider policies related code amendments to regulate mobile services vendor. This is working with the City Manager's Office. Number nine, a study session on regulating diversified retail use, also working with the City Manager's Office. Number 10, comparative studies that compare the standards for mixed-use developments and high-density residential guidelines with other cities. This is a carryover from fiscal year 19 and 20. And finally, we have the dark sky ordinance and dark sky ordinance, also the birth safe design guidelines. These are also carryover items from fiscal year 19 to 20. With that, I'm happy to answer questions and conclude my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. All right. Are there any questions, clarifying questions from the commission? And please unmute. Yes, Vice Chair Wong?
Yeah, I just have one really on the sign ordinance update. I don't think I remember what that was in terms of the temporary sign ordinances. If you can, someone can actually refresh me on what that was in terms of temporary sign regulations.
Sure. I will say this is not an item that proposed by the commission or by your community development staff. It was mostly recommended by the City Attorney's Office to review and update our existing sign ordinance. It's fairly old, like a lot of our codes. So we kind of, time to time, take the effort to update certain ordinances and code sections, and this is one that, with the City Attorney's Office, we felt is important to update. I'll let Sarah speak on it if there's anything else to add, but that's basically what that is.
Sure. I can just add that in the area of sign ordinances, the law continues to evolve on a pretty regular basis. There's a lot of First Amendment cases brought in federal court on municipality sign ordinances, including one that went all the Supreme Court a couple of years ago. And so I believe the recommendation coming from the City Attorney's Office is just to review and make sure that we are compliant with current standards as articulated by the court and to update and modernize the code otherwise.
Thank you. I don't know if this is the right time to have this discussion, but, you know, we've had to approve variances of the sign ordinance for gas station signs, lighted gas station signs. Has that been incorporated yet, or is that something we can incorporate into this update?
Yeah, my understanding, talking to the planning staff, that that is something that we're looking to see if we can incorporate into that, into this particular item.
Commissioner Takahashi, are you referring to, I believe it was the Valero?
Valero was one, and then there was, there were two. There have been two over the last seven years, I think. Right? And just that they're automated and they're not manual signs. And there was some concerns about the colors and the intensity of the lighting. But there was, right, the ordinance was old where there were just no digital gas station pricing signs at the time, and therefore, everything was an exception. And so it seems like that's one of those areas that modernization is appropriate.
I have a question about the residential and mixed-use residential design standards. This one also says it's a new proposed work program item. Was that, did that originate with the Planning Commission, or did that come from some other source?
It did. It originated in our discussion with you earlier this year. Staff is proposing that as a way to further establish our objective standards. And we're very much missing some very objective and clear design standards for these districts. So that is sort of our way to, as you call for during our VAALCO exercises, there are a lot of discussions on SB 35, for example, a lot of discussions on objective standards. So this is our way to further clarify that.
Right. Okay, so I'm going to assume this is addressing the issue of creating harmony with a surrounding neighborhood, what that actually means would get defined?
That is absolutely one of the topics, yes.
Okay, super. Okay. It's just sometimes seeing the language when it's changed a little bit. I'm not sure it will arrive at the same endpoint. We have the general plan authorization process. This is saying it's a proposed work program item for the City Council directive, so they've given us that project?
Yes, that's correct. And I presented a study session with City Council earlier this month to kind of get some additional advice and direction from the City Council, and the council has provided that. So the planning staff is working on some updates based on that direction, and will be bringing back to Planning Commission for review and recommendations before we take it back to City Council for final approval.
Great, because that has given us some confusion for what our, what our role is in that process. So that'll definitely help. I do have a question. I'm looking at the transportation section of the city work program, and item two, regional transformative transit project initiatives. And I was wondering where this, where this work program item is supposed to go. I'm noticing you've got Stevens Creek Corridor, High Capacity Transit, Automated Fixed Guideway to Mountain View, Cupertino Station at I-280 and Wolf, Highway 85 Transit Guideway, and a couple more items. So who will be looking at that? And is there any way that the Planning Commission could have some say on this?
Yeah, so this has been approved as an item for the Public Works Department. My understanding is that this is a long-term project, sort of looking at the area within the next 30 years or so. And with, it's led by MTC, I believe. So the Public Works Department will be working with MTC on this particular item. We can, of course, follow up and get some updates and maybe do some study sessions at Planning Commission when the project gets to a place that we have something to present.
Okay, so my concern is that if it doesn't come to a public hearing, that some decisions will be made through Public Works, and I'm going to assume, well, it's saying MTC here. You'd also need to have VTA involved as well, I'm going to assume. So my concern is that if it doesn't have any public hearing at this preliminary stage, that they could make some decisions regarding Stevens Creek Boulevard, for example, that might not be popular with the public, and then it gets farther down the road, people start making, believing that there's been some decision that's agreed upon, and then it comes to the public, and then after a certain amount of money and time and effort has been spent, you then end up hearing that either the public really likes what you're doing, or they don't. And so I'm a little concerned about the possibility that it'll get too far down the road without hearing from the residents.
Sure, fair enough. I think this item's been assigned to the Public Works Department, so I'll have to coordinate and provide more updates.
Okay, so the public will be able to speak on that. And then the other item, which I'd like to hear about, is the Bolinger Road Safety Study. That sounds, again, like it's something that's being handled by Public Works.
Yes, as well as the Bike Ped Commission.
Okay. Oh, good. Good. So it'll have, it'll have public input. And I don't see, so Mooney came and spoke about McClellan, and that's not on the work program. Is there some way that that message can be brought to Public Works? Or City Council for some discussion there? I don't really understand what he's describing, but it sounds like there could be several neighbors to that construction that might be impacted.
Yeah. If I understood him correctly, his concern was that when they back out of their driveway, they don't have enough space to get to the side, but they will go right into the middle of the road, which is already narrowed down. So I'm not even sure what we can do from the design side of things to help ameliorate the situation. But I think that's a pretty valid concern, that their ability to reverse from their driveway could be limited because McClellan is a busy road, and they won't have the space currently available because of the bike lane to back into.
So Ben, that's an, that's an ongoing work item? Is there some?
Well, once again, that's not a community development work program item, so I'll have to follow up on that. I do know that Mooney has been in touch with our Public Works Department this week, if not last week as well. And so the Public Works Department staff is working with Mooney to address his concerns. And I will say to the public, as well as Mooney or Plan Commissioners, if you have these concerns, please feel free to reach out to Public Works Department as well.
Okay, great. Do we have any further comments on our work program? From the Commissioners. Okay, so seeing no further comments, I'm going to go to public comment, and I see three hands raised. The first is Lisa Warren. Lisa?
Can you hear?
Welcome.
Hi. So I am glad the question was asked about the sign ordinance item. In my opinion, it definitely needs to be revisited, and I would hope that when that's done, that dark sky policies will be considered, among other things. They were supposed to be sent, well, and I noticed, I think it says something about temporary signs, which are often a problem. And in fact, in some developments, they've been forbidden, but they happen anyway. So I hope that not only is it figured out well, but that it's also enforced well. And then also residential design and mixed-use design standards. I'm very glad that that's being brought up, and I'm hoping, and I'm not sure that it can be, but if it can be extended to ADUs, that would be very valuable. Sorry, gotta go to work. Thanks. Bye.
Thank you, Lisa.
Hello.
Trying to mute. Okay. So next I see Danessa Tchamansky. Welcome, Danessa.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I'm starting my timer. Welcome.
Kitty, good evening, everyone. I don't know if this is the right place for this, but I'd really like our Planning Commission to consider about, you know, the world ahead of us when we're talking about residential and mixed-use residential design standards. And I wanted you to consider, I don't know how or if we could increase the amount of required outdoor public spaces in new developments, and also require that indoor public spaces have operable windows for increased air circulation. And I know it might be years before some of our developments are completed, but from my readings, I kind of feel like the coronavirus and its future variations are here to stay. And it's not just because of COVID-19. Indoor air spaces are, I've been reading a lot of health things, and indoor air spaces are by nature, you know, a lot more polluted than outdoor air spaces. And even in normal times, people are spending about 90% of their time indoors, where concentrations of pollutants from cleaners and dust and aerosols and chemicals are two to five times higher than they are outdoors, which is really harmful to young children and the elderly, or anyone with like a cardiovascular or respiratory problem. So I'd like to see apartments have balconies, at least, that are big enough for people to go outside and sit in a chair. So when people are stuck at home sheltering in place, they can get some fresh air. And also, one of the things with coronavirus, when you're talking about public spaces and apartment buildings, or mixed-use areas, the coronavirus complicates matters since indoor viral concentrations, of course, are always much heavier than outdoors, and that's where most of the transmission appears to be taking place. So the problem with regular air conditioning systems and contained rooms is they don't do much more than push, you know, the virus around, which kind of makes it worse. And most of those air systems don't do anything to remove the tiny particles from the air. So it could be years before we get this under control, and this could be only the first viral outbreak in a continuous series. So with all the pressures to increase density, that's all here, increase density, increase density, increase density, I think that clean air becomes even more of a compelling issue. But sadly, air quality's, you know, it's critical for everyone's health, but it goes ignored because we can't see it and it doesn't have a monetary value. So just, just a thought. Thank you.
Right. Thank you, Danessa. Okay, I see Jennifer Griffin? Welcome, Jennifer.
Thank you, Chair Moore. Hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin, and that was interesting what Danessa brought up. I think I agree with her completely. We don't know the full ramifications of the coronavirus. We have read that it can be carried through HVAC systems. It can be spread in air particles, and if it's in a confined area. I think the idea of having more outdoor space available to people, especially in apartments, is going to become more and more important. The other thing I wanted to talk about is, I think, item number six on the list was a study session for the impact and requirements for the next reno cycle. This involves the MTC A-bag, and I really don't feel comfortable with our current makeup of the A-bag and the MTC. I don't like the way the boards have been assigned. Some of these people have been picked. They're not elected. They're not... Some of these people have been picked, they're not elected, they're not, they don't have the correct qualifications to be on the board. And therefore, some of these decisions they've come up with, with the RENA numbers, are completely ludicrous and ridiculous. Yeah, I'll throw, if MTC is making decisions about what's going down Stevens Creek Boulevard, the public needs to have a say in that. I don't want some of this stuff, I don't want hyperloops down Stevens Creek Boulevard. I think buses are adequate, and I don't want fixed bus rapid transit. In that regard, the RENA numbers are completely ridiculous, and we need to get a handle on why is this ridiculous now and getting more ridiculous and outlandish? The problem is that when the public starts getting involved, as we have, we are called dumb, like we have no right to ask questions. Well, I'm sorry, you know, we've had three years of the massive housing bills, the jig is up, everybody's researched how the housing bills are coming out, who's paying for them, and we, and it's bleeding out into the MTC and the A-BAG. Well, the public is aware of what's going on, so we have the right to ask questions. And I really think that some of the members at the A-BAG and MTC boards should be removed and replaced with people that have the correct qualifications. I hate to see things like the RENA being used as a treadmill, so if we don't meet these 100 million billion housing units, we have A-BAG biting us on the, chasing us through. Well, that was something that the housing bills set up. We, A-BAG, I'm sorry, SB 35, I'm sorry. It's like if we don't do, the 3 million housing units were threatened with SB 35. That's no way to run and treat California citizens. I'm really tired of it. So let's have more information about that. And the ADU bills, I know of ADUs being built in Santa Cruz County on an unstable hillside over the.
Okay, please finish, okay. Thank you, I had to abruptly halt. Mooney Madipadla? Mooney, are you there?
Yeah, could you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry, yeah. So thanks for giving me opportunity to speak again. So I echo what Danessa said. We need to establish, you know, standards for open air and whatnot, given the current situation we are in. And I agree with her, now this thing and its variants are here to stay, and we're going to have this, you know, for decades to come, so we better establish, you know, some better standards. I say this because I know quite a few of my colleagues that work in our New York office, live in New York, are selling their homes and leaving. I know at least three of them that sold their houses and moved to, you know, rural Pennsylvania and, you know, North Carolina and some other places. So we've got to think ahead and establish some standards. So I really appreciate, you know, Danessa bringing it up. Regarding my earlier comment about, you know, the horseshoe driveway, I'm getting excellent support from city staff, no issues there. I'll take care of myself, you know, what needs to be done. My concern was about, you know, other residents that may not know, you know, what's going to happen to them. So we may have to do something to at least alert them to their options, if they need to do something. I would hate to see, you know, residents complain after the fact. I want us to be, you know, a little bit more proactive to help them out. Thank you.
Right. Thank you, Mooney. And seeing no further hands raised, we'll bring it back to the Planning Commission? And close public comments, are there?
Chair Moore, we did have an email that we received
Oh, okay.
From Commissioner Feng. And the attorney on hand suggested this would be a good time to read his comments.
Right, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Feng couldn't attend the meeting this evening, but he did have some comments that he wanted read and available for comments by his fellow commissioners. He writes, "Comments on, number one, developmental accountability. I am concerned about misinterpretation of the language in this point around the scope of responsibility for staff and the Planning Commission. Monitor implementation of development agreements and conditions of approval. The municipal code draws a clear line of approval authority in Section 19.12.030, and the Planning Commission has a responsibility for public review of a proposed development agreement or conditions of approval, but developing the draft of the DA and conditions is a staff responsibility. In keeping with the first objective in this section, which seeks to look at efficiency of the approval and delivery process, we should not broaden the public review process to make deliverability worse. I will also add that many residential projects, the kind of projects that we say we support, are subject to state legislative limits on the number of public hearings for approval. We don't want to waste those limited opportunities to serve the public by interfering in projects till, excuse me, still in the proposal phase. Comment number two, support for professional review. A number of the items on the approved plan include areas that touch on the GP, GPAs, and the housing element. We should underline that it's important on these large topics that staff should have the opportunity and funding for consultant analysis to guide our decision-making process. I don't think that it's useful for the PC, the council, or the city to hear the personal interests of the five commissioners. We really need to lay out the facts around policy so we can make informed recommendations. Even though the city budget is heavily impacted by COVID, these large issues are important, and we should build up toward finding information and communicating to the public. But we need to make sure that these have proper funding and priority, so it doesn't become antidote and misinformation. Comment three, general plan authorization process. I have spoken previously that I do not support the GPA gateway process, and I want to continue to voice a opinion that it does not benefit the objectives of the city. The problem with the gateway plan is exactly in line with my previous point. Without more progress and formal guidance from the planning staff, the gateway hearings have provided little value to the community. On one hand, it might seek to create public visibility or the vision of a project before it becomes to formal hearings. But on the other hand, there is almost no real information on the many issues that are critical in a final approval. No concrete information on the amount or mix of housing, building form, parking, traffic impact, economic impact, et cetera. This is because we have structured the gateway approval as a gate before allowing any quantitative staff analysis of the project. I'd like to again state that city staff independently selects the consultants who will do the engineering, economic, traffic, and environmental studies, and that the applicant reimburses the city in full for the cost of that work. For a proposed project, this investigative process does not cost taxpayer dollars. It is only after you have staff analysis.
Clerk, I have a question for our city attorney.
Yes.
Okay, so my concern here is that this is a planning commissioner who is absent from this meeting, and we're now allowing that planning commissioner to have unlimited talking time? So I'm just, I would like you to rethink that. And I believe that this written communication, ordinarily what would happen for a written communication for when anyone writes in?
Sure, I was going to ask that. What, when you receive public comment during the commission hearing, do you have a limit on how long it takes you to read?
Three minutes.
Okay, but we haven't been timing this?
He said, we've gone three minutes on this already, okay. So I would like to limit it now because it's, it's as if we're giving an absent planning commissioner the floor with unlimited time, and I find that irregular.
I understand that concern. Madam Clerk, how much longer of the, you have to go? Are you finishing it, or is it?
Yeah, he has, he has two, it was just in the last sentence of, and then he has a four and a five, they're all, they're both just one sentence, and then he has a little summary that's, looks like it's three sentences.
Why don't you finish this third point that you were just in the middle of, and then we'll stop there?
Okay.
Thank you.
Let's see. It's only after you have a staff analysis that you can really have a meaningful discussion about impacts and mitigations.
Thank you.
That's the end of that comment. Would you like me to forward this email to the rest of the commissioners now, or do you just want me to post it as normal for a written communication item?
Just post it as normal, thank you.
Okay, I'll do that, thank you.
All right, okay, thank you, and sorry for the interruption on that item. Are there any further comments from the planning commissioners? Did anyone want to comment on what they had heard? And, you know, I don't really feel that we're getting into the substance of these items that that's going to come at a later time, where those types of debates over what the project objective is, that we'll be looking at that later, is that the understanding of my fellow commissioners?
Yeah, that is. Yeah, that's my understanding.
Okay, great, okay. So are there any further comments on the work program items? So Ben, we are simply making a recommendation to city council on these items, that we've made essentially no alterations to them? Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so let me get back to our agenda.
Happy to make a nomination or to recommend that the city council consider the Planning Commission FY 2020 to 2021 work program.
Second that. Do we need to take a vote on this?
Yes, I believe you do.
Okay, Madam Clerk, will you call the vote?
Okay, sure. Vice Chair Wang?
Aye, yes.
Commissioner Takahashi?
Aye.
Commissioner Saxino?
Yes.
And Chair Moore?
Aye.
The motion carries 4-1 with Commissioner Feng absent.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. Next, we move on to staff and commission reports.
Just a quick question on clarity, is it 4-1 or is it 4-0?
4-0, right.
It's 4-0-1, you're correct, Commissioner Takahashi.
Thank you. And next we move on to staff and commission reports, do we have any?
There are no further staff reports.
Okay, do we have any commission reports? No, I would like to mention, I briefly attended the Legislative Review Committee on Friday, and they've been, you know, working and digging into all of the, you heard about the nine housing bills, and they have written several letters to Sacramento regarding these bills with their position statements. If you're interested, you can get copies of those from Katie Namura. And, well, we have finished up early tonight, and with that, having no further comments from the commissioners, I call this meeting adjourned. Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
While Californians do their part to stay home, many essential workers help keep our state running. To all these workers, including our immigrant workforce, who are providing our health and security, we need to make sure that we're not letting them do that.